This is what I'd like us to have real call.
Yeah.
Real call.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
He's not here.
Council President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
On the phone.
President, the legal department's put together some binders for everyone at the council there that basically lays out some of the documents that we'll be talking about tonight during this special session. What we've got here is basically some presentation by Mr. Rice, who's here to talk to us a little bit about the financials. The binder also has a copy of a draft resolution that we have put together as far as giving the mayor the authority to execute a letter agreement that we provided in tab number three. Tab number three is a pretty short agreement that lays out, basically in concept, the timeline, that all these terms would come together as far as an agreement ultimately to bring the flyovers to I-565. Basically, we can talk about it more in detail, and I believe there's four pages of the agreement. What this does is it lays out a detailed timeline on page two of tab two as far as what has to happen and when it has to happen. All of these work on a very tight timeline that ultimately culminates on November the 14th with a vote by this council on a funding agreement, voting whether or not to accept a bid on this flyover project, and third, to approve an annexation petition that is expected to be submitted for the Publix, the Cliff Farms Publix. Basically, to summarize the agreement, first, what we would have is there'd be a petition to annex the Cliff Farms Publix filed on October 20th. Once we have that filed, this council would then consider on the first reading an ordinance to annex the Cliff Farms on the 24th. However, it would not be up for a vote, just a first reading. And there would also be a first reading of a, I'm sorry, resolution as far as a funding agreement. First reading only on October 24th. Then, after November the 2nd, we have what we expect to be a change in the law that will be very advantageous to the city as far as proceeding with these bonds that we're going to reference. And then on November the 14th, hopefully with a new change in the law, we would proceed with a vote to approve a funding agreement for proposed revenue bonds for the Town Madison District and access, accept the bid for the phase-two flyovers. And we would also, at that same meeting, consider the annexation of Publix. So all this will basically come together on November the 14th. We'd have a first reading this Monday for all of this. And then this timeline that I've mentioned here in the letter agreement, page two of tab three, this lays out the order of what we expect to happen and when it has to happen. So there's a bit of a tight timeline here, but it all really culminates November the 14th with that vote to determine those individual events. What we propose here is a resolution for the council to consider in concept to the overall timeline. Now, each one of these components still have to be debated. Each one of these components still have to be approved and have to be voted on. But what we've got here is just a general letter agreement that we'd like the council to agree through this resolution to determine whether or not they want to embark on this timeline and whether this is an agreement that we can at least in concept agree to moving forward. So there's a bunch of moving parts. Like I said, we have here, speaking to the financials, we've got Mr. Rush Rice here. And we also have available Preston Bolt outside council, who's been working diligently on the funding agreement and can speak to some of the details of that. And we have in your binder also a copy of what's a funding agreement that is tentative. It's still, unfortunately, there's still some terms that have to be worked out. But he can give us the broad picture, explain ultimately how this is going to be structured and how it's going to come about. So after talking with Mr. Rice, hearing from Mr. Bolt, and of course, President Shaw, Councilperson Bartlett have been instrumental in negotiations. So they may have some more information as far as the particulars of how this came together. But I'd be happy to discuss with the council the ins and outs of the agreement. But there are probably some sensitive areas that we might need to be careful, you know, if it might introduce us in a meeting and executive session. But I'd be happy to address that as it comes along. But with having said that, would we like to turn it over to Mr. Rice to explain the financials?
Absolutely. I guess I'm recording. Thanks very much. I'm Rush Rice. National Advisory Farm Rice Advisory. We were engaged by the city in March of 2021 on this project that's been going on for a while. The general mission to determine in the, from 35,000 feet, is this a good deal for the city of Madison? That's exactly, that's kind of the nutshell of what we're doing here. We were provided with a lot of estimates and forecasts and a lot of things that were that were gonna happen, hopefully gonna happen at Town Madison. Town Madison is a very ambitious development that has got a lot of, got a lot of processes. This was a very exciting engagement for our firm that will flow to the city of Madison that the city of Madison can use for any lawful purpose. This is very important. This is a different figure than the unplugged revenues that are coming out of, that never make it into this, this comes straight to the city. But this would come straight to the city after, because of the way we've structured the debt. This would come and it will sit, it can sit on reserve and it can pile up. And I, you know, this is, this is the city of Madison's money. And if you notice, when you get out here to about 15 years down the road, there's more, there's more money than there is debt. So that's that magic day when this can just be completely paid off and 100% of this money comes to the city of Madison. And we're talking about, at that point in time, $10 million a year. I think well over $10 million a year because I think 1.5% growth is really a ludicrously conservative number to use. So the whole thing has a margin of safety. Before the bonds are structured, both two years' interest, the first two years' interest only, the district bonds will have what's called capitalized interest and a debt and a reserve fund. So that's how your reserve fund starts over here in Madison's column. We start right there with $9 million. The next year in 2024, there's no debt service to be paid, very little debt service to be paid. So you're coming out of the blocks before anything even really gets going. You've got $16.5 million on reserve, which is, which that right there gives us what I would consider a very wide margin of safety in the, in the transaction as a whole. Y'all stop me anytime you want to. But then this right here is an estimate of all of the different taxes that are gonna come out of Town Madison that are gonna go. And if you look, one's here, now there's a county piece too. Madison, we, everything we say, about 95% of it is Madison and about 5% of it is Madison County. So they're, they're a party of this too. So there are some county ad valorem taxes out there. These are the city ad valorem taxes. And as you, as you can see, the, the debt, the debt amount, the five and a half mils, a half a mil and 11 mils are dedicated to debt on the ballpark, I guess, the library and the school system right there. The blue are not pledged to any of these Town Madison debts. So this is what's, this is what's pledged to the bonds and this is what comes out to the city of Madison. And a portion of this pledged part will come back to Madison too because we don't need all of it to cover debt. We've got that margin of safety. So we've got these estimates here of, that we've gone to individual merchants, businesses, so forth, to estimate the ad valorem taxes, sales tax, liquor tax, lodging tax. Okay? Lodging taxes are not in here for a period of a while. We've gone through. But this is, we've gone and assessed every bit. And again, I want to point out, from, from 23 down, we're only forecasting a 1.5% annual growth rate in time travel and sales, which is, in my opinion, is overly conservative. But when you start fooling around with it and say, well, what if we had 3% annual growth? What if we had 5% annual growth? These numbers get really high popping. These are the tenants that are considered within this analysis. Each one of these tenants is either already open, under construction, or under a signed lease and in development. So there's no, there's no pie in the sky there. Y'all are gonna enjoy Sazaz. That's owned by some buddies of mine in Montgomery. And that's a really good place. This is where we evaluated the financing alternatives. Initially, the plan was to have one big district bond issue. That's, that, if we did that, the very first dollar that gets generated goes against those district bonds and the city doesn't get anything until the district bonds are paid off. Didn't feel like that was the best way to go. Spent a lot of time with Roger going through this, this plan. And we, what we came up with is a good. We also feel like the I-565 interchange will be better managed as a city of Madison project than a developer managed project. And I think that Al Dot and everybody else involved will be more comfortable with the city managing that product. The district bonds are gonna be non-rated, higher interest rate. The city of Madison is AA+. One of the strongest credits in America. A lower interest rate. So that, so Madison doing a piece of this averages down the all-in cost of, cost of money here, bearing in mind that Town Madison pays for all of this. So what we're doing is the city, on a portion of it, the city is throwing its credit rating on top of it. But the debts are, the payments are gonna be made by the Town Madison taxes. This won't be a budget item for the, for the city. The, let's see, we're gonna get in here, you know, we talked about lower interest rates, lower, you know, and this also enables those excess funds to immediately begin flowing to the city instead of waiting 10, 12, 15 years to get to them. This would be the, this is how the debt is structured right now because the district bonds are the, the less highly regarded. These will be the non-rated bonds. We have them structured being, being paid for first. The city's bonds, if you see the city's bonds there, interest only for a few years. Comes second, but that's not, that's not an order of priority. That's a structural consideration to average the interest rate down. This is a, you know, we would expect the, both series of bonds will have no more than 10 years of what we call call protection. It would not surprise me at all if we get 10 years out down the road and both of those bond issues are paid off. Wouldn't surprise me in the least, given the history of growth that occurs in Madison. The, we wanted to quantify the risk here. That's the, that's the number one priority. And what we see here is that the pledged taxes, which we think are overly conservative, that's the combined debt service and the coverage, which is, is ample. The, we got, we got more pledged taxes than we do debt service. So the only thing that the city will have to budget will be, what are we gonna do with the extra money that's coming into the city of Madison? The city of Madison will have to budget for, what if this thing, what if this thing falls short? The, and, and once again, I say, you know, as we add, as the developer adds new tenants out there, new apartments, there are, I think they just went over 100 single-family homes in there. They've got, they've got another 100 or so to go. These things all add to that tax revenue that's coming in. And so we, we feel like that in, in, you know, in that next-to-last paragraph, you know, that, that margin of safety is only gonna grow as more, as more businesses can continue to locate out there. Publix puts you on the top, I think, between the, you know, the annexation of the Publix gets you $700,000 in sales taxes alone, plus there'll be a significant amount of ad valorem taxes out there. This is very important. This is your, this is the money that comes through immediately. So in fact, it's already coming in. Schools, Town Madison will produce, all right, let's just take fiscal '23, which we're in now. We think about between sales tax and property taxes, Town Madison alone will have almost, there'll be almost $2 million in revenue for public schools here. And again, we've got a 1.5% inflation factor on that too. Who knows where that'll go? That's, that's very important. And this, this revenue here is not tied to either bond issue. This is just, this is just, this is coming in now. This is not and will not be tied to either bond issue. This is a very brief summary of the funding agreement, which I'll take you through. But my next day of law school will be my very first. So I don't know if y'all can hear Preston. The, the general gist of this is the city is already obligated to the developer under a funding agreement from 2018. So what this is gonna do is replace that. Okay? And then the terms of this funding agreement should stay the same between now and the time they do what's now called the developer bond that will, that will become a capital market bond that they'll do probably in January, thereabouts. But the terms will be the same so that if they, if they never did, if they never did the district bonds, then, well, you just, they, they, you, this, this structure's in place. So instead of, instead of Town Madison District paying, you know, Franklin Funds and, and, you know, Mass Mutual or whoever were to buy the capital market bonds, pay the developer and they can get his money back over 15 years instead of, instead of right now. So I think they're incentivized to wanna, to wanna do this. But if they don't, the way we've got, Preston has this structured, is that, well, if they don't, then so what? I think that's the best thing to do. Without getting into any, I, I think Preston would be better to answer your questions about the details of funding. And that's, that's, that's all I have.
Rush?
If anybody's got questions, I'd be happy to give it a shot.
Maybe this'll help. Real quick, can I restate this and you tell me if I'm understanding it correctly? First of all, this will not add any more expenses to the city's budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, let me, let me say, the, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a CPA either. The, the, the cost of, the cost of, of the, the bonds that the city issues in your, in your audit report, it's gonna say, we have this bond, we have these bonds. But it's also gonna say, we have these sales taxes, ad valorem taxes and whatnot to pay for it, and the amount of those taxes exceeds, so it's not gonna be a budget. It would be, from a budget standpoint, this will be a plus and not a negative.
Right.
The city also agrees in this to pay the cost of getting the district audited, having, having an audit done on the district and also paying the trustee bank on this because the city wants to be sure that there's, A, there's an audit done, but, and B, that the trustee gets paid so the trustee does what it's supposed to do. Those are very small amounts and those will also be paid for out of these revenues.
Right. Because these taxes are already pledged for that infrastructure. So this is already, I mean, it's a wash as far as the budget is concerned. This is not gonna increase what we owe.
It should be, it should, it should inure to the benefit of the city.
Okay. As far as expenses, it's a wash. Then this new agreement totally replaces the previous agreement. It goes away and we have only this agreement. Okay. And in 15 years, what we have in our reserve balance will exceed what the remaining debt is.
If you.
Or may to exceed what's.
If you assume that Town Madison is, has businesses out there, which I think is the, we've, we've gotta make that leap of faith. There's gonna be, it might not be, it might not be the Yard Milkshake Shop. It might be XYZ Ice Cream Shop, but there's gonna be somebody in there. You know, Town Madison will be there. And if they achieve 1.5% growth in sales and values out there, then yes, this whole thing could be gone well before 15 years.
Okay. Thank you.
In which case, 100% of the, of the revenues flow to the city of Madison, which will be these, these numbers in this column right here. So when we get out to 15 years out here, where you got nine, if you have 1%, 1.5% growth, then you'd have $9 million a year coming into the city of Madison, nowhere to go except for whoever's on the council then to decide how to spend it.
Yeah.
But it's, but it, but that's the, that is the, that's, that would be the plan. It should not be, as long as you, you can't predict the future with certainty. But if you assume that you're gonna have some growth and that there will be commercial activity in Town Madison, then.
Okay. Thank you.
What interest rates are you using to do your bonds?
We used 6% on the district bonds and 5% on the city's bonds. And we think the city's bonds will be the fours right now to be conservative.
Can we talk a little bit about our debt limit and how absorbing this kind of debt on a GO warrant, how that impacts and how it's different when you're investing in infrastructure and economic development?
It's a good question. I left that out. Sorry. Cities in Alabama have a statutory debt limit, the debt limit established by law for general obligation debt. It says your, your debt cannot exceed 20% of the assessed valuation of all real and personal property lying within that city. But there's an exception. We have a constitutional amendment that is currently called Amendment 772 that will be modified by, there's a constitutional amendment amending the amendment on the ballot in, in November, this coming election day, that's gonna modify that law that enables the city to go up to 50% of its general obligation debt limit for projects that are to benefit economic and commercial development. This certainly does. The, the flyovers here certainly do benefit commercial and economic development in a large way. The, the city won't run afoul, this, this won't, the size of this, if it's $37 million-ish and it's covered by the sales, sales and ad valorem and liquor taxes coming out of Town Madison, it's not gonna give, the, the rating agencies are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna just say, yeah, that's fine. They won't, they won't make a blip. And this will not run you afoul of any debt payments that you have. You have maybe a couple of hundred million dollars in margin under, under Amendment 772 to, to do something like this. This is not gonna, this is not gonna impede the city's ability to borrow for any other thing it might want to.
So you're saying that the 50% were great, but at the 20, we're not. At the 50%, it's not a problem, they, they lower rate, it's, are we close? What are you saying?
If the 20% limit applied to this, the city might, might consider, you know, that that, that this might get you a little closer to 20%. City of Madison is AA+ credit. The, the rating, this, this is an Alabama statute. Most cities in Alabama are broke. They're not as affluent as Madison. They don't have the management that Madison does. They don't have the tax base that Madison has. So the legislature has arbitrarily stated that cities in Alabama have a, have a borrowing limit of 20% of their assessed valuation. Well, that's like, that's, that's just putting a blanket over every, you know, the city of, the city of Madison is not the city of enterprise. Enterprise would probably do well to limit their borrowing to 10% of their assessed valuation. For the city of Madison to have debt all the way up to 50% of its assessed valuation, the city of Madison couldn't handle it. This wouldn't, this would not impact the rate particularly because you've got a source of repayment in this case. So the rating agencies look at this and go, well, yeah, it's debt and debt is debt. But there's an identified pledged source of repayment for it. So. The amount of the debt does not, is not gonna give anybody, me nor anybody in the market nor any rating agency any kind of.
So there, because I get this question a lot. So we are going to have money for capital improvements going forward to handle everything else in the city if we commit ourselves because of the excess that's coming in.
There's a positive cash flow in the way this is being structured.
Okay.
And this is sales tax. You get to tax the people from Decatur that come over here to shop.
I do have another question that kind of pertains in this way. You said that as, as we stand now, this is all that's coming in, but because we do the flyovers, we will gain more commercial development. Okay, Ken, okay, people are saying, okay, where and then how much? How much commercial land is there? What are we truly going to be gaining by spending this $37 million?
Well, we're not, we're not urban, we're not urban planners to do that because our, our task at hand was, can, is this, is this good for Madison? And the answer to that, in my opinion, is emphatically yes. To project what sort of development this will spur, it will spur development. Anytime you, you reduce choke points and decrease travel time, increase safety, if you would make it easier to get in and out of things, commercial activity follows. People like to have their business somewhere that's easy to get in and out of. But I'm not, we're not urban planners, so I can't, you know, I like, my, my mission says, what's on the ground right now will pay for this. Now, a reasonable person will. Now, a reasonable person will assume that, once built, it makes not only Town Madison, but everything in the vicinity of out there that's not even in Town Madison benefits. I'm, I'm just from the accent, I'm used to, we rest in peace. It's a, uh, people don't want to track them, but we're not, but we're, you know, we're, we're, our whole mission and our whole analysis has been to assume that we do this and nobody else comes. And if you do this and nobody else comes, it's, it's still going to do it. But I think if you do this, lots of people-
Does anybody happen to know what that figure is, how much commercial land is out there? I mean, I keep getting asked it, it, does anybody know? Ken, Ken? Yeah, no one's ever given me-
I sent it to Megan.
Oh. Okay.
I was waiting to transmit it until, you know, we were here, and, um, so I was trying to find it. I was looking, I was finding it, you know, as I sent it to her, I just haven't called the number. I mean, I could have, I could have, but I just haven't called the number.
Okay.
But I did do that now, and then that's whatever.
Okay, well, it'd be, it'd be good to have it, because I honestly am getting that question a lot. What do we gain by adding this? What could we spend the thirty-seven million on? If we're already bringing in this much money now? I'm just, that's a question.
Mary Beth, can you make sure that all of us get a copy of that? Thank you.
We've got Commissioner Haraway here also from the county. Steve, you got any questions or comments from, from the county side?
This is being recorded.
From our standpoint, I'm glad that you guys are taking the time to go through this and do it, and look at it, and evaluate it, and I've had the privilege of sitting in on one of the meetings and heard, saw the numbers, and, uh, glad you guys have got Mr. Rice involved doing the analysis to look and see that this is going to be able to generate revenue for the city. And that was my concern, were you guys going to go in here, turn this, take this over, and the city is not going to get anything out of it? All you were going to do is get the debt paid off. And from the looks of the numbers, you guys are going in a situation where you're going to generate revenue back to the city that you can immediately put to work for the residents, and then seeing the numbers that the school systems are picking up out of this, I mean, that's, that's very impressive that they're going to, I think you said two million dollars is what the schools were getting at this time? And tha- that's good to see, and that number will continue to grow. So, uh, from our standpoint, we're excited that you guys are looking at this, taking the time to do your due diligence and look and determine if this is the right thing to do for the city. And I feel like that, at this point, you guys are in good shape to do that. And from our standpoint, uh, I've talked to the chairman about it, and we're committed to, for the county to, you know, stay where we're at in this process, uh, the abatements that we did on the, uh, ad liborum tax, we're good to try to stay there where we're at, and, you know, it's a small percentage, it's what we are. You guys are ninety-five, or only five percent of it, but the county's willing to work with you guys and do what we can.
Very good.
Anything else, you know, I'll be glad to do what I can to help out as well. And if I need to be a part of any of the meetings, let me know, and I'll be glad to be involved and do what we can to try to get you guys the best possible deal you can, and then get it toward, you've got some revenue to come in and start doing some projects with, and not just be paying debt service.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
I do have one question, I see Margaritaville Hotel here. I is, I thought that was kind of, kind of, we didn't really have much of a deal, so this is a deal now, we are bringing in Margaritaville? Is that what I'm reading here? Can anybody answer that? We don't know. It's your, I don't-
I can't hear the question, what's the question?
Margaritaville, it's listed-
I don't think it should be on the list.
Okay.
I mean, I just don't think it, I don't think that should be there.
No, is it part of the numbers?
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, that's been on and off and on and off so many times, I needed to take that off.
You did take it off, okay, that's good.
Let, let me say this, there are no Margaritaville numbers in the analysis.
Okay.
That's just a list of people.
It should just say hotel, because there will be a hotel there, I just don't think we can say Margaritaville, and it's good that you don't have any numbers in there.
I did not include Margaritaville numbers.
Yep.
I've got one other question for Mr. Rice, just one final one. Right now, there's, um, a little bit of uncertainty, uh, in the markets. There's, um, if we were to go on this timeframe that's suggested, and an agreement were approved, and the bid on the flyovers were accepted in November, what, what does that look like in terms of the timing of you entering the market for the GO warrants? In terms of, do you, is there any reason you would hold, or would you go? Would you go as soon as you could?
This is, to me, you answered a good question. The best time to be taking this to the market would have been about March the fifteenth of this year, about seven months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, we've lost a lot of ground. Now, um, you hear, now, uh, we got some more inflationary numbers. To me, this is like, this is like the old question of when's the best time to plant a tree? Best time to plant a tree is thirty years ago, the second best time to plant a tree is today. So I wouldn't, uh, I, I would go with, you know, we would hope that at some point in time we'd get some relief in interest rates, but I believe that can't, that can't be predicted. So, you know, this works in the market today. There will be opportunities along the road, um, depending on, uh, you know, how we can ultimately structure this, that, you know, if we get a lot lower interest rates, this could be refinanced, you know, so that to a lower rate. And, and, but the, what the, a refinancing would do is, you would, it would just, in this case, you think of it differently, when the city refinanced, the city bonds, it saves money, freeing up money that can be used for other purposes. You refinance something like this, it's just going to create more excess money that will squirt out of Town Madison that can be used by the city on a need for purpose. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, you know, there wouldn't be a good reason to pay.
Is there historically a, a better time after the midterm elections to give it a little bit of time to kind of stabilize, or not necessarily?
I don't think so. I think the markets are, I think the market now has a, Johnny, you might, might say, your markets are kind of priced in, the markets are pricing in another three-quarters of a percent, uh, rate hike by the Federal Reserve in November, uh, that's kind of in, in, in your rates now. We wouldn't be selling bonds before the Fed needs. So if the Fed were to come and do something other than that, like if the, if the Fed came out and said, we're, we're only going to hike rates a half a point this time, then that might create a, a sharp drop in interest rates, and we might, that'd be, we'd be, we'd be hustling to get into the market.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other thing that we've got to do is you, you start to, the calendar we have right now has us sort of being in the market the first week of December and closing mid-December. Because if you, you've got Thanksgiving in there, then about the middle of December, you start losing people's attention. Uh, so usually, the first, first week of December is a good time to be in the market. But that's, you know, that gets into the other part of our, you know, of our engagement for the city is if, uh, if it's a bad market, and we get, we're ready to go, we don't have to go that day. We might tell you, let's settle. They like the first of the year, let's wait and see how, uh, elections will be over by the time we do this, so we'll know what the, you know, if, if there's going to be a political impact on rates. But, but we'll have, uh, thankfully, but it just goes to white, we don't really see anything major happening in, in, in the rate market in the next month or two, so it'll probably be, you know, that's what we have, we, we're covering fine now, we have a great market in the safe. We're covering that, so it's really well. You know, I, I've come out and doing this, but I'm not as old as Bill. I've been doing this for thirty-eight years.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, I, I remember when we were happy to do municipal bond issuance in the single digits, because that was, I thought that was really great, and what I always did, that bond deal in the city of X Y Z at eight percent.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So we're, we're not-
Those were bad times.
Well, right, and, and so we, in the grand scheme of things, if we went out and did this at four and a half, five percent, it's, you're going to say, well, that's, you know, let's do it. And if we kick ourselves next, next March, and they say, well, it's down to four and a quarter, we, we still did a good deal.
Mm-hmm.
So in the district bonds, uh, if we were to go forward, there's two different things, there's capitalized interest and debt service reserve fund. Capitalized interest is just to give us another year to get everything in place.
Here's the way that works, and this is really, really, Roger, Roger, okay. Capitalized interest, right, BJ's is not open yet.
Okay.
Okay. BJ's will open in sometime, and I, the latest word is, oh, Mary Beth, what do they say, late twenty-three, first, first quarter of twenty-four, it'll be in there. Well, we don't have any BJ's money in our analysis for fiscal twenty-three. We have them coming on board in twenty-four. Like, uh, Stifel's underwriters, when they go into the market, they're, they're going to, they want to have, you know, their coverage, well, they got plenty of coverage when BJ's opens, okay? BJ's not open yet, so they're going to say, well, what, who's going to pay the interest until BJ's opens? So they'll put an, an amount of money into the bonds called capitalized interest. They're going to put a year's worth of interest into the deal. And they're also going to demand that you have a debt service reserve fund in there. Well, here's what it is, capitalized interest, all right, see that number right there? Three million, eight forty-eight, right there, that excess placed revenues, that first year, they don't have to pay any debt service, it's covered by the capitalized interest fund. So all those, all these taxes, except the interest on the city's bonds, goes right to the city. So the city, the city going to get that mu-, the city get that money right now. The debt service reserve fund is in there. That goes into ma-, that'll, that'll make the last payment on those bonds. That's the city's money. That's the only, that's the only party it can benefit. So the, the fact that we have a requirement for capitalized interest creates a little, we get to jumpstart our, our, uh, you know, what I call when we're, we're, we get to, Roger gets to start rat-holing money, we kind of get to jumpstart it so that very conservatively, that would be sixteen and a half million dollars sitting there about fiscal twenty-five. Because that, that'll, that gives you a big margin of safety.
Okay, so, and then the second question is, there's two different interest rates, so, you know, you know, and I've never even acted as if I'm a lawyer, so I'm, I'm asking a kind of a question to get some information out of here.
These bonds right here.
Yeah.
The district bonds, non-rated.
So my question is, why wouldn't we, as a city, take over both these bonds immediately?
You know, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a, it would be worth some discuss, and it would be something that the city could come back at them with if things fall apart, you've got that ability. Uh, this is, it would also be a lot less debt.
So the other question is, going back to, with, uh, Commissioner Haraway, you know, coming from the county standpoint, right now, the county is, um, I don't know what the word would be, with property taxes, ad liborum taxes, supporting that, this, this project. If they were to not continue, if we take over both of them, then there's no district anymore, then it's our city. What's, what's the cost of the city losing their support if they were not to support us in doing that? So you got, so right now, Steve, what's the five-
Can we vote and not support this project? But we're going to re-vote on it at some point. At least if you got voted down, so we're not going to lose support, what percentage of our number will come out of it?
Uh, it's, it's a, it's a piece of it, it's, uh, let me go find my, uh-
There's a slide on it.
There's a slide, it's right there, it's right there, it's on that far left.
Far left.
You know, it's a new, first year-
Four hundred thousand.
Twenty-three, about seven hundred thousand dollars, and then it starts going up.
Yeah, the total there is twenty-six point nine.
You mean that they wouldn't be able to, they'd, they'd be, uh, they'd be down to pretty close. So that's a, you know, certainly now, the, the flip side of that, Mayor, is that, is that if you started talking about, you know, you start talking about the thirty-seven million GO under Amendment 772, or whatever it is, not going to raise any eyebrows, you start doubling that, uh, Mike, you know, ask the team, I want to take a look under the hood, movies, but it wouldn't, uh, it could be an ace up your sleeve, really.
So Steve, do you have any idea, one way or the other, what you guys would do? I mean, I'm not, trying to put you on the spot, but I think it does make a big difference. You know, one of the things that, to me, is critical for this, is if we're going to take it over, let's take it over. Right now, we're kind of still having the district involved with that, which wasn't something that made anybody very excited. You know, so I think in this case, if the city's going to do it, then I'd like to understand what it costs us if we want to do it, or what we would have to work with, with our partners, to make sure that we don't have to pay this, that this is still a part of it. But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find the balance of that in doing one bond issuance that we do versus splitting this up and having two different costs from two different bonds.
That's it, you know, I, I would miss something that, uh, could, there's no, uh, the only reason that, that would not work would be if, uh, somebody felt like the size of the city's GO was too large, but I wouldn't-
Now, with the numbers you have here, I mean, you blow, we blow that out of the water.
You know, we, we, we'd, uh, cover it very comfortably.
Uh-huh.
I think in, in some prior discussions with Roger, he has expressed some concern of carrying that much debt on the city's books, because this plan splits it. And so now, half that debt is going on the cooperative district's books, and only the thirty-seven million.
You know, now you're right, that's, that would be Roger's concern, you know, Roger, Roger felt like, you know, it was, it was very much well within the city's purview mission, how to do a, a road project, a highway project, pretty much, and, uh, rats, you know, out there, in the streets, sidewalk lights, and, uh, you know, utilities and such.
But, I, so a couple of things, one, I think our, we're looking as a city, you know, to take the excess and bank it, so we in turn can pay it off as quickly as we can and have that number on, I guess it's the far left.
Yes.
All ours, so I mean, that's our whole goal, is not to just take two, three million dollars a year and just put it in your general fund, we want to get it paid off as quickly as we can. But if we match the two of these together, does it, I mean, and we take out the full thing under the city, not just the cooperative district, doesn't that improve our interest rate, which means we'll pay less?
It would, it would, uh, lower it some, like, we're using six for layers and using five for yours.
Yeah. I mean, that, at the point, that's a big difference if you take that.
Four hundred thousand dollars a year.
And that's half of what the, the county right now is putting in there. And if that's the only reason we weren't going to look to do it, we could even work with them on supporting that at a two and a half percent rate, instead of a five percent, or, you know, something along the lines. I just feel like, while the numbers are great, if we're going to do it, let's do it where we have it, and don't have to worry about the cooperative district anymore.
I'd want to have, I'd want to have a conversation with the rating agencies before, before, uh-
I would love to have that. Okay.
Steve, do you think the commission is going to do if we pull that district? Is that a legal issue, or is that just a voting issue? If we pull the district, and there's not a district there anymore, if we, if we pull that co-op?
Well, you say you pull it, if we pay the district off, basically, when we take out the bonds, we in essence, the, the district is no longer per, per se needed, but we still need the project supported at the level that you guys had looked to do it. I guess that's the question is, not, and again, you can't speak for them, but just trying to make the best possible decision that we could.
I think if, if there was excess revenue coming in, and you were taking all of our revenue and paying all of that service, and you guys taking some of the excess revenue and using it to do another thing, if we wanted to do that, that might be a concern, but if we were ready to take a little bit of the revenue like you guys were, based on our percentage, then I think we could buy-
Okay.
What's the time limit on the bid that we have?
November thirtieth.
Oh, okay, so we have a little bit of a question, we got two meetings. And we, and can even have a special meeting if we needed to?
Mm-hmm.
After November thirtieth, uh, the steel price would only hold there for a price till November thirtieth. So they, they would, um, I think McGinnis and- So they, they would, um, I think McGinnis and Miller Miller would continue conversations with us, but they don't know what that dollar figure would be after the thirtieth.
That's to make a decision before then.
That's November the thirtieth, that's not the end of this month.
No, November thirtieth, that, that's why this timeline is crucial on us hitting these, hitting all these.
I guess another question, Johnny, this may be for you. Right now, they're looking to do two different bond issuances. If we combine them into, in essence, one bond issuance, what, is there a big, a, a savings, a major savings, or is it a minor savings? On the, on a eighty thousand, eighty million dollar bond?
I can't answer that. Honestly, but it would be a different type of savings.
Okay.
But it would, it would be, yeah, I think it'd be, well, you wouldn't have a, if you do it as a G O, you don't have to capitalize it. You don't have to have a reserve. Those two items make your issue. Although it's the city's money, as I pointed out, it's gonna be, it's gonna go to the benefit of the city. Uh, it would reduce the size, so you would reduce the size of the borrowing thereby, the size of the.
Interest.
Underwriting, the amount of the interest, uh, the, it would, uh, you know, that would be a, you know, in that regard, it would be a plus. I would like to, uh, to reemphasize that the, uh, we would like to give this, we would like to assess the rating impact that would have if you, before we advise on that.
Yeah.
I would have no, I would have no problem with it at all whatsoever. Uh, but I would like to assess the rating impact of that.
Well, the capitalized interest made good sense. That's what we did with Target. You know, when we did the Target bonds, you know, they, they were, um, they paid off in ten years, but we did twelve years to give it two years to build the shopping center to have the revenue to pay for it. So that makes sense, and we may need to do that. But if the debt service is simply being kept in there, that's, that's five million dollars, you know, that you're not, immediately, that you're not gonna be paying interest on. Okay.
The way you see, we decide what we stop paying, it's really, uh, much of the money push. Yeah. With, if you need more, you can. Just, just. Yeah, you're gonna have, uh, you know, we'll get into, uh, we probably have a, uh, I imagine that, that they have a pretty big bill run up with Maynard Cooper over the years. That would, uh. You know, if you look, uh, that number right there, that right there.
Yeah.
You know, they've been running the legal clock now for a while, and that, so you would have some problems.
Well, I mean, I understand that's another, we're gonna pay that, we're gonna pay it one way or the other, right?
Wouldn't have that. Wouldn't have that.
You could still have the capitalized interest, couldn't you?
Uh, you could, sure.
I mean, you go back to, if you're putting them both together, you've gotta make sure that there's enough revenue, you know, to at least get close as the, as.
You've got enough revenue. See, you've got enough revenue to pay, if you do, I've got you, I've got the city's side set up as two years' interest only as well.
Okay.
Okay, so if you look, okay.
Getting dizzy.
So the ci- actually, the city is, is not, is, no interest through, you know, for fifteen years, because we're trying to get this out. Trying to get this side out of here quicker. Uh, but you, you could do, you know, we have this one set up as two years' interest only. You could do that. The interest is nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, uh, in twenty-three, and it would max at a year of interest on that. So you're gonna say, that'd be about three million in interest for a couple of years, and you're gonna have well over that coming in. You could still capitalize the interest until BJ's opens, if you want to.
Okay.
But I think you got enough coming in right now already.
Just a question. Um, if the market does become unstable, what is the highest interest rate that we could look at and still be able to fund this?
That is a, uh, that is a measurable number.
I mean, I'd be, you just don't know what the future's gonna hold, and you don't know what Federal Reserve's gonna do and stuff. So it'd just be interesting, what number can we go, not gonna work?
Well, you know, if you, if you're, particularly if you're talking about, you know, now, if you say doing the whole thing is a, is a general obligation, I say that, I really wanna have that conversation with the rating agency to make sure that doesn't have any long-term impact on the city. I've seen, I've had conversations about, uh, about, you know, thirty-seven million dollar fees, but I haven't had a conversation about seven million dollar fees. So I wanna have that conversation. Um, the, uh, you know, it works fine with the, uh, if this pays over here at six percent. Actually, about six thirty, once you put the impact of fees in there, which would be, uh, so, you know, so it works at least up to that. Uh, I don't see anything happening in the airtime that would get double A plus. Uh, rates to six and a half percent, that would be something.
Uh-uh. So, from a, a dumb question standpoint, are we basically talking eighty-five million at this, at an aggregate? I'll say aggregate, but at a five and a six percent over this period? Right, but I mean, what we're showing here is two separate loans, one at five, one at six. The total is roughly eighty-five. And we're talking about a total maybe of, I don't know, somewhere eighty-one, eighty-two million because of the less fees in, in essence, and a lower interest rate. And we're asking, what's the difference in interest over time that we're gonna pay? Yeah, probably somewhere around about ten, eleven million.
It's, it's, it would be a big number, but I, but I, again, let me emphasize, the road, this, this, this road we're going down needs to be tempered.
Sure.
With a, a, a very detailed conversation with Moody's and S and P.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna, there's no reason, this project supports the, the, as structured, the, the town of Madison projects supports the whole thing. And if we, I, I would say, yeah, there would be some savings to do. The whole thing is a G O, but you don't wanna have to say, oh, you're double A plus, it's now A plus.
One hundred percent agree. I just think it's something to talk about, to have our best option going forward.
But Paul, is that, is that in essence what you were asking? Okay, thanks.
And there would be time to have both of those figures for comparison before we had to make the decision by November thirtieth, right?
You know, we gotta have this done pretty quick if we're gonna change the funding agreement and all that. That'll have to be done before the fourteenth.
Will we be able to have those comparisons by November fourteenth, that meeting? I mean, that's kinda two, three weeks, right?
I think the timing would be off because the timeline here anticipates a first reading Monday.
Okay, I see. And you can't really adjust that.
We could suspend the rules on the fourteenth, if we need to suspend, suspend the rules, but we could.
If we're talking about ten or eleven million dollars.
I mean, he's sitting right here. How quick can you have the discussion?
The, uh, well, you know, there, there, uh, there, there are people that are, I, I can't, I can't call your analysts, Moody's, and say, hey, what, what are, let me paint this, this is gonna take a couple of weeks.
Sure.
This is gonna, this is gonna take a while. This is gonna take, uh, probably, uh, yeah, this will, this will, this protect, this, this, yeah, this will be looked at real hard.
You could, could we not write the funding agreement? That could be either or. That.
Right.
Preston's still on?
Hey, Preston?
I'm on. I thank him to be taking a nap. Good to hear Rush very well.
Okay.
Rush, let me ask you another question. If we went ahead with the funding agreement as it is, you know, you said that if the interest rates went down, we could refinance, would it be possible to refinance and pay off the district bonds? And then have one bond if we needed to keep this timeline?
The, the district bonds are gonna have some court protection on the two. Uh, they could be, you know, you're probably, the shortest we could compress it would probably be eight years. Um, you know, you could, uh, really need Congress to, to give us back taxes in advance to finance, which gets us down in the weeds. So, twenty seventeen, tax act took.
Put either or in front of your business, if we can do that. Have a door to either side.
So, we would be, you know, we'd probably stuck with something for eight years.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Preston, is that something we could add, add in, in the funding agreement that it, that, that either or, that if we can do a G O bond for all of it, we would go down that aisle, if we can, if we couldn't, we would do two separate?
Be, before the district bonds are issued, you would do that?
Correct.
Uh, yes, you can. We, we'd have to think through what all the impacts would be, but, but that's doable.
I think you need something to read, maybe on Monday, and then notice that if, if it makes sense, then it gives us an opportunity to do it, and if not.
Do a first reading on two different funding agreements, essentially?
Well, I mean, that one funding agreement would say you, you can fund either way. You can either do a G O for all of it, or a G O for half, and then a, a dirt bond for the other.
Either, either you do the G O and pay off the existing district debt straight up, or you enter a funding agreement to pay off the district, new district debt, which in turn pays off the system debt.
We're twenty-four days away from November fourteenth, so that seems to me like it would be enough time to have those two separate figures, twenty-four days? I mean, that doesn't seem unreasonable.
Creating obviously more work for them to put it either or, but if it can be done that way, then that gives us some flexibility and these guys some time to analyze it. You wanna make.
Preston, can you hear me?
At D M R, yes. You're going.
You're closer to that microphone, Rush.
Let's say, Preston, let's, the, the, um, if this could, if the funding agreement, agreement could be amended so that the city can fulfill and, by, 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 by the simple payment of money, make the district go away. So that we could do the, we could do this swap of, you know, developer gets his, is, uh, what we've been calling the twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-two bond. And then, that would, they would, we could then have a purchase option on that twenty-twenty-two bond?
Well, I think, I think what you would do, but the, the twenty-twenty-two A bond, the, the substitute bond, is going to, is going to be prepayable at any time anyway.
Right.
So I think you could build in a provision that says that the city would have the option that any time prior to the issuance of the district's capital markets bonds, the twenty-three bonds.
Right.
To redeem and prepay the twenty-two A bond, and essentially, at that point, the district goes away. So I, I think it's, it's certainly a complication, but it's, I think it's, from a legal and drafting standpoint, it's doable.
I think it's doable within our timeframe, too.
We need to talk to the county and get their agreement on that piece of it as we're going through this, too.
Yeah, that would be a piece that we need to take care of, and I didn't mean to put Steve, Steve's not on the spot. That's just something as we're trying to, you know, they've been a great partner in helping us accomplish this, and it's really just all of us trying to figure out the best way to go forward to minimize what the city has and have the most control. I mean, I think that's the one thing that we all started in, in looking to do this is, when, you know, part of the answer to Karen's question is, if we don't do this, there's no guarantee that the flyovers will be built at least anytime soon. And that does not help the city. It is not in our best interest. It's not in the best interest of Walco's, it's not in the best interest of our city. There's so much that can still and will come there if they're built. But us having the full control over all of that is a, is a positive thing that we're all working towards. So, so that's one of the reasons that, to me, it's important that, at least, can that be done? And if it can, and it saves us money, then we could bring that to the county commission and say, here's why we'd like your partnership, and, and listen to them as far as what they would like to see in partnering with us, or continuing to partner with us, because that's been valuable to us.
I think even with partnering with the county, this can still be a win.
Oh, yeah, it already is.
You know, I mean, well, even if we go with the G O, all G O bond, and the district goes away, we can make it so that it's worthwhile for the county and it's worthwhile for us.
Absolutely.
Rush, I think I heard you address this, but I assume part of that conversation would have to do with the rating agencies and making sure we're not stepping in it from their standpoint.
Exactly. What I want, what I, what I would wanna do is, is first, you know, is talk to them. I, I wanna go into, I will go into this process with the rating agencies with Roger and me holding hands and, and talking to them together. I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get out there on a limb and start negotiating on behalf of the city of Madison. Conceptually, um, I would, um, you know, I think my first, my first conversation would be with Roger to tell him what I'm doing, and then, and then make contact with your analysts and set up some, uh, some Zoom calls to lay this out for them. We, we can, we can get them satisfied. See, here's the, here's the thing you run into with rating agencies, right? We know that Madison, Alabama is a very affluent, a very fortunate community, uh, that is well managed, and it is a, Madison should be a triple A credit. The reason Madison's not a triple A credit is Madison is in Alabama. And there is a, there is a predisposed bias against us country folks down here, all right? So the, the, making the case that we go and show that we're gonna do a, a long-term bond issue in support of a, of a, uh, big shopping center, big fine shopping center, big fine, nice, beautiful, upscale shopping center. They're not gonna have that mental picture in their heads.
They're thinking Kmart.
They, they think we're gonna have a Kmart, and they think there might be a barbecue joint out there, and they may or may not have the streets paved. And it's, uh, and it's a, it's something I've fought my, my entire career. So, having said that, it might, you know, we, we gotta then sell them that that's gonna be viable not fifteen years from now, but thirty years from now. And it's, uh, it's, it's gonna, I'm just, 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 we're gonna, we'll, we'll, we'll have a go. We'll have a go at it, and we'll be, and we'll be your advocate. But I'm just saying, this is not a slam dunk. It's, um, I don't wanna get anybody, this would be a great way to, a great way to do it. I don't wanna get anybody's hopes up. I know these guys can sell the bonds. Uh, and, and the, uh, you know, the, the, we, you know, we can, we can certainly move to try to, and it's, and it's gonna be hard to get anybody to give us a fast answer. They also won't give you an answer. They will do a full review of these bonds that you do, and then they're gonna put a rating on them. They're not gonna tell you in advance what that rating's gonna be. They can signal, uh, what that is, but they're not gonna tell you, uh, in advance. Now, they, they will say, you know, Madison, you know, Madison's has, has some debt. Madison has some debt because it supports the finest public school system in Alabama, if not the southeast. They don't believe that. They all went to, they all went to fancy private schools up in Connecticut. So, they, they don't care. They're, they're, uh. But if we could, if we could pull it off, Johnny and these guys can do it. There will be some fees that, that you'll have some, some of these guys that worked on the, with the developers for years and years are gonna squeal like pigs stuck under a gate. So be prepared to have some of those folks, uh, up in your ear. Everything they tell you may not be, they're gonna, but that's, um.
That's why we have you.
They call me. Teflon man. But the, uh, yeah, that's, that's the, um, yeah, it would, if, if you, if you wanted to do it that way, because all of this debt is going, is being paid back from the same stream of cash flows. So it makes sense, like John said, but let's pay it back at the lowest possible interest. Now, if, if we can do that without gumming up our ratings. No reason not to, but I'm not gonna make any promises.
And the effect of gumming up our ratings would be a higher interest rate, a higher interest.
Going forward.
Yeah.
And it's also, you know, those ratings, that's a, that's a letter grade on.
Yeah, it's a report card.
What, what municipal government's doing, you know, it's your report card. Because they're not just looking at, you know, they're looking at dollars, but they're, 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 they're quantifying not just your elected leadership, they're, they're quantifying your, your management and staff and legal and finance. They're putting, they're literally putting a letter grade on, uh, on things like that. So you don't wanna, you don't wanna mess up your report card. And my partner, Chris, is, is who y'all have all met, has, has got great relationships with your analysts. He's closer to their age. They're all very young and very smart. I'm old and dumb.
Well, if we're gonna go there, can I double back and ask my question? Can we still do CPIs if we go at this large of a borrowing and when can I still have more?
CPI?
The, uh, for my capital improvements, will there be money left over if we do one big lump?
The numbers will be similar to what we showed, it's, it's actually a little, a little better. Yeah, you'll have, you'll have money spitting out to do capital improvements and.
So it will still be there even if we do a big lump, some, as opposed to just the one and, okay.
Most municipalities don't even consider, uh, doing, there, there wouldn't even be, it wouldn't even be considered to do any part of this as a general obligation. They don't have the wherewithal to do it. Madison's different.
Have you, any other finance questions for Mr. Russ?
I have my questions on construction bid and that sort of thing, but not as far as the finance.
You want to go ahead and move on to the, to the resolution side of that? Or the letter agreement or whatever you want to go to next?
The other component of the agreement would be that there was a acceptance of a bid that we have. They would execute, that the city would execute the acceptance of the bid to the lowest responsible bidder on November the fourteenth. As it stands, we had three bidders and the lowest of those was a figure of thirty-six million, seven eighty. And we do currently have a stipulation to extend that deadline for us to accept that bid. My calculations were that was actually November twenty-eighth, just a couple of days off from what the president mentioned previously, but November twenty-eighth will basically be the deadline to accept the bid. We have not accepted anything as of yet. There was an extension and then we would have to, the city would have to make the determination as to who's the lowest responsible bidder by that date, November twenty-eighth.
Just out of curiosity, Brian, what were the other bids?
Sure, what we had was one bid from DeMint Construction. That was thirty-nine million, four sixteen, had some change. Then we had Scott Bridge, they bid thirty-nine million, one ninety-six. So there was roughly a two and a half million dollar difference between, between the lowest and the, and the second.
Were they identical other than that?
Uh, these are all responsible, uh, bidders. As far as the breakdown, it's kind of hard to really differentiate as far as how the bids came in line by line without a line by line analysis. But the bottom line was, this was basically the same design with just a difference as far as estimates of labor, et cetera. So as far as breaking down, it's really hard to compare them without looking line by line, but, but ultimately they, they all were, were basically putting together the same, same product, so.
Okay, but, um, I mean, like in the one that we are looking at, is there like an inflation clause in it that they will, that any overages will have to pay into?
Well, I think that it'll be subject, uh, like any acceptance of a bid to change orders. If in fact there is any sort of changed market steel prices and inflating, et cetera. So it's definitely unfortunately a moving target as we continue to delay and push forward the date that they actually start on this. Now, I understand that the stipulation that we have includes trying to lock in some of those prices. They can't guarantee that for the long term, but there can be changes in some of those the longer this is pushed out. I believe that's been communicated to us.
Okay, so is that gonna change how much we're gonna need to borrow?
Well, no, I, I mean, as far as the, the change orders, I mean, we can anticipate what those might ultimately be, but, uh, there, there could very well, when you're talking about picking something up, you know, three months or after the first bid, uh, we would anticipate there might be some change order, but I don't believe that it would, uh. And again, I, I don't know as far as the ultimate amounts, but it shouldn't have changed the amounts of our borrowing, no.
Are there any caps?
Sorry?
Are there any caps in any of this, the spending items or is it all gonna be open-ended based on market at the time?
No, when we sign this bid, it locks them in and that change order will only be if it's a change. Everybody bid hard plans, so the, that's why this, this number is good up until the twenty-eighth. It's not going up past that. Now, a change order is if they find something different, like if there's rock over there they didn't know about. That would be a change order. Hey, we found rock in the ground.
But I mean, increase in prices of steel or?
I'm sorry?
Any other?
No, once we sign this on the, on the twenty-eighth, we're locked into that price unless they find a change from the plan. But they're locking, that's why that twenty-eighth is important. After the twenty-eighth, then the steel price changes.
So then are, there are no clauses for increases?
I'm sorry, can you say again?
There are no clauses for increases in the?
Not after the twenty-eighth. If we sign that.
They would be locked into the bid, however, I, I, you know, I think one of the portions of the bid say, and I can't remember precisely, we do have a copy of the bid and their entire, um, response to the bid here. I believe it was a five percent, the change orders can't exceed five percent of the, the entire cost, but I'd have to look at the actual term that we have in, in the bid.
And the change orders will be based on prices and not on some structural change or something?
No, no, it would not. From my understanding, as far as the bid basically is one set design, it's just a matter of whether they go out and then, uh, there's some material change in, uh, the cost of something, but the labor, the, the design, all of that remains the same as far as I understand.
Okay.
Like you said, if you go out there and there's some new unforeseen, um, um, you know, characteristic of, of what they're doing. And we encounter those all the time with, you know, different, you know, other types of contracts, but no, as far as this goes, we're not gonna have to spend twice. The, the bid is gonna be very, very close to that number as far as what they have as far as the, I believe it was thirty-seven million.
I mean, the cost is gonna be very close to the bid.
Because that's, that's the contract, that's basically what they've agreed to. So there's just gonna be some minor deviation with the change order relative to the full amount of the contract.
So it's firm fixed price bid unless there's something they don't anticipate that they see out there that changes the plan that they did not anticipate in which they can do an engineering change order. And it sounds like you said engineering change order cannot exceed five percent of the total cumulative.
I believe that was the, the term that we have in the bid, yes.
Okay. Is that, that, that's my understanding of it. Is that everybody else's sight picture? Okay.
Uh, as they're doing this, do we have any liability in construction of it at all? Or is it, where's the liability gonna land on them?
When you say liability, are you saying, uh, any additional liability for the, just the cost of the project or are you talking as far as any?
I don't know. I mean, if we end up with a, it just becomes a huge construction problem or something, you know, or?
I don't foresee there being any sort of additional liability as far as, you know, tort, civil liability is, is, as far as, you know, whether, you can always get into, into litigation, you know. Anytime there's a project, you can run into some issue where subcontractor causes a delay, this or that. At this point, it's just impossible for us to see if there's any sort of problems like that. But basically what we have is a reputable bidder with good, good experience, good reputation as I understand. So I don't foresee that being an issue, but unfortunately you can never, ever, you know, it's not outside the realm of possibility that unfortunately you could have issues with a subcontractor.
So they're doing the complete management of the whole, the whole project?
I, I think as far as this issue, I'm not one hundred percent sure as far as how it's being managed. Mayor, I would have to refer to Mr. President, is this still being managed by COM as far as the project or is this gonna go?
I think Steve, I think, I think that AE, that AE COM is gonna manage it.
Right.
I'll be there.
That is my understanding. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't mistaken about that.
Are we carrying a contingency on this?
I'm sorry?
Are we carrying a contingency line on this? In other words, if I, if I understand, I did the math right, I went to Auburn, so bear with me. But if it's thirty-seven million, five percent, that's roughly about one point eight five million. Are we carrying about two million in reserve to account for any kind of changes or anything like that?
I cannot speak to, as far as the financials, I'm not. As far as the bid, I'd have to look at the, see what line it might have in here, but I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
That's a good question.
I mean, Greg, is that something they might have in there or something that we would carry as part of our? I mean, we're financing it, right? Is that from the borrowing standpoint where we borrow essentially two million more and kind of put that over here as a contingency in case we need it? And the thirty-seven you're thinking? Please. Yeah. So roughly usually ten percent or something or? Yeah, okay.
I apologize for not being.
I'm in my locker, I'm in here, you can read through it. This album of bids in this packet, I mean, you can read through and see.
Number seven.
I went through it quickly. I don't see any contingency, but there could be.
What is the proposed timeline on having this completed? Do we know?
They added, um, whatever the day, whatever the completion. Part of the change order they were gonna have, if they extended the bid, part of their extension was they were gonna, they were gonna have to add a hundred and twenty days to whatever their original, um, ti- timeframe was. Because they got bumped on their steel, their steel delivery, they'll have to reschedule steel and then they were hoping to start. Right now, if they don't start until December, January, it'll, uh, them starting in the middle of winter will push out days and delay them. So they ask for an additional hundred and twenty.
So let's say they're able to start the first of January, how long will it take to complete it?
What they have was at a, uh, the thirty minutes?
Talks of the time of completion and it says, uh, substantially complete within five hundred and fifty calendar days after the date when the contract commences.
So you'd add a hundred and twenty days to that, whatever that six hundred and forty something days.
Okay.
What'd you say though, substantially?
Three.
Well, the term that they use is substantially complete within five hundred and fifty days after the date when the contract time commences to run.
Have we defined what substantial means?
Architects do that.
They do?
They do. There's a certain point where that's like, you're like ninety-eight percent done and then you're doing like punch out.
Essentially if it can be used for the purpose intended, I think that that's what you can find in the definitions and some of the law that says it is substantially, once you can actually use it as, people can actually use it as an off ramp. You may not have all of the shrubbery there, you may not necessarily have, you know, this is all prettied up, but, but essentially it can be used.
I will say, I, just in my own personal job, I'd like to use that, that'd be awesome in defense contract. Substantially complete.
That's common in the construction world.
It is non-defense.
I think it's safe to say two years. It would take two years.
Yeah.
So is, if they finish sooner, do they get a bonus? Or if they go longer, we don't have to pay? What, is that how, how is this worded?
There's usually liquidated damages in there, I don't know what liquidated damages are.
Damages so they're not late. As far as a term in here that, that gives incentive.
Five percent.
I don't.
Is that five percent per day?
Mount the bid to become our predilection. We've got the contract for the dinner lot, excuse me. Dangerous for the delay.
Can you place my finger on the liquidation damages clause at this moment, but, um. Let me search a little bit here on the.
So I've gone through that bid. I don't see anything in here about a contingency, but I know, I don't, I don't know, Greg, how, how guys do, or folks do in construction. But I know in my line of work, we typically back in what they call MR, management reserve, which is contingency. We're peanut butter spread that over everything, so there may be margin in each one of these items that they're keeping on their side, but we probably oughta, I would think in our MRR, set aside some just in case as well.
Sounds wise.
People look at my bid and they see MR, like out of my eyes, they go, eh, you don't need that.
I apologize, I'm not finding the liquidated damages clause in here. Three times and I missed it apparently.
It's usually like a daily rate on just what that is every day that they're not done.
So we do have a date certain in there to protect us? I live on Hughes, that's why I'm asking.
There's a hard date in, in there on, on how many working days they get to work, so.
Five hundred days.
So sixty thou-
So many, so much time, like they don't give you the rainy days and the next two days for it to dry, so just because it says it's three, five hundred working days.
So roughly a sixty thou, sixty-seven thousand dollars a day, roughly.
What's that?
You take thirty-seven million and divide it by five fifty. That's sixty-seven thousand dollars a day approximately. I don't know if that's what it is, but. Again, I went to Auburn.
I'm sorry, I've gone through it four times and I do not see a liquidation damages clause or anything accelerated or giving a discount as far as the terms of the actual, uh, the bid.
Okay, can, can that be clarified before Monday maybe or?
That's something we can take a closer look and absolutely give you, uh, more information on. Okay, well, I've overlooked it then.
Seems kind of important.
It's, it's part of the RFP.
We've never seen the ALDOT when it didn't have liquidated damages.
Exactly, that's why I was. Finger on it right now, so.
There's not an incentive to get done sooner, there's no dam, there's damages if you don't based on items under their control. Okay. Above ten percent, even though they claim five? Okay. Okay. Essentially, at that point, it's too much of a change of scope. It's a new project.
I would absolutely expect it to be in there, so we can forward that to you by Monday.
Okay.
Mayor Beth, is that 10% override the 5% that they bid? Okay. Yeah. Okay.
All right. What else you want to walk through?
As far as what we've got here, we have prepared a draft resolution that basically authorized the mayor to execute this letter agreement. As far as, I guess really the meat of this really comes down to the timeline. First, as far as the components of this, I think, I hope, just to, you know, lay it out there. Basically, first, the city would have to enter into a funding agreement between the city and the district to support the payment of the principal interest in revenue bonds. Then you have the second component, where the city would accept the bid and issue a notice to proceed to the lowest responsible bidder for construction on the interchange Phase Two project. And that would be ultimately funded by the general warrants. Then, the other component is that we would basically have this annexation of the publics that would come in, and all this would be ultimately voted on the same day, November the 14th. Now, the way this would work, the way the agreement is set up, is if the council were to approve this funding agreement, I'm sorry, not funding agreement, the, the letter agreement today, they would then submit their, their petition to annex the publics tomorrow. Basically, come Monday, according to the timeline, what we would then do is we would both place a, place a, a resolution for the funding agreement, and we would place the proposed ordinance for annexation for first reading on Monday. So then, basically, we can have the debate as far as those terms of the funding agreement, the terms, you know, how we handle the annexation. Then that would move us along past election day, where we anticipate that there would be a change in the law that helps us with issuance of the bids. And then, once we get to the, this point, basically, the way this is structured, as of November 14th, there's an understanding that, that all three of these components have to happen at the same time. We have to vote for the funding agreement, have to vote to accept the bid, and third, council has to approve, could then approve the annexation petition. So this gives us the timeline. There were some other discussions previously about amending the funding agreement. I think there was discussion from Mr. Bolt that said that that was a quote doable, or something that could be done, or looked at as far as whether to work into our timeline. And then ultimately, on November 15th, the city would execute and deliver the funding agreement to the district and issue notices to proceed to the lowest responsible bidder, which we believe, looking at the, the numbers will be McGinnis. So basically, this is, every one of these components would require debate. Each one of these components would still require a vote to authorize a funding agreement, to authorize the annexation. But what we do here is, is basically to agree in concept to those terms to start the, basically, the wheels turning to, to get us to that point. And if anyone has any questions as far as the timeline, that would be on tab three, page two, which sets out, starting from today, October 19th, through November 15th, basically what that timeline would be.
I don't need to add either on the 15th there, we need, we need to publish, we need to publish the annexation of publics on the 15th.
Right. And of course, the, the annexation is not official until we actually do the publication, but by this agreement, we could basically do that immediately as of November 15th. We can do that as quickly as, we can set up the publishing in advance so that it occurs on the 15th.
Correct.
But we can get it done as, as soon as possible, as early as November 15th.
Yeah. We don't need that to lag. It needs to be, it's published.
And all that is exactly the same, whether it's one bond or two bonds?
As far as the agreement that we have in place here, I don't think, I don't know if that changes anything. I don't know if Mr. Bolt is still on our conference call with anything changed as far as the funding agreement, if we were to take that different course.
I think, was that, was that a question for me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I would think we would want to have some mention in this letter agreement of the possibility of a prepayment from GO proceeds, unless they argue, and there's no, there's no reason why the Breland team would object to that, because it gets him paid off faster. But just in case, I would think we want to have something in there that at least references that possibility as an alternative.
So there would be an addition, some additional terms, but we don't anticipate that it would be any sort of a deal break or anything that would slow down the negotiations over the funding agreements.
I couldn't understand that.
I'm sorry. There are additional terms, Mr. Bolt, that we would have to include, but you're saying it would not necessarily be anything that'd be a deal breaker or slow down our timeline?
Right, I agree with you, I didn't speed it up.
Gotcha.
Anybody have questions about this resolution, why we put it together, and kind of keeps everybody on track, that we can hit these dates and lines everybody in?
Well, this is a letter agreement that has the timeline.
This doesn't obligate us to do any of, this just says we will work toward these dates, and this is what it would look like as we work through it.
Right.
This is the same, we will do it. We're just saying we would work toward these dates, and this, and this is how we would proceed.
Right.
And this gives them assurance that we are working toward it, that they'll go and bring, and bring the petition of the publics tomorrow. If we vote on this tonight, if we don't, they're not bringing the publics tomorrow.
Right.
So this is all just keeping everybody in check, if you do this, I'll do that on down the line.
So what, where would we add the wording about the possible change to the funding agreement? Would that be like what it says, party sign wise form of funding agreement?
It's still a funding agreement.
It's still a funding agreement.
Either we do it with one or two bonds.
All right, that's what I, that's what I thought, but I was.
Yes. I think it's drafted generally enough so that it could cover.
Okay.
It just doesn't have like specifics of, of that agreement in it. It's just saying.
Okay.
And again, I apologize for not having the specifics that y'all asked for as far as the bid, but I'd be happy to get all these to you by Monday, as far as the liquidation damages, et cetera. I just apologize, we, looking through this, I didn't have full command over a couple of those terms that y'all were asking about. So, but I can get that information to you by Monday, so you can be informed before making additional decision on it.
Any other questions on this? On this letter agreement? Do we want to vote on this after, at the very end, or do we want to do it now, or do we need to do it at the end?
Probably at the end, I think would be best.
All right. You want to talk through the annexation of publics track, or the funding agreement, or what do you want?
As far as the annexation, basically, as I understand, the, the agreement as it stands here, it's been laid out in the letter agreement, they would, if there's a vote today that approves this letter agreement, tomorrow, they file the petition. Once we get the petition filed, and I can, for Mary Beth, she wants to chime in on this part, we can then, I believe with this timeline, between now and November 14th, could put it on the normal track for zoning and all those things. So basically, where that would leave us is by the agreement here, we cannot act on that until November 14th, when we actually did the vote, and then the publication would be the next day. The camp for Breland, they have everything they need in order to make that petition, file it tomorrow. There was some talk about, we'd actually filled one out, sent them, sent it over to them with some information that they had actually put on their last petition, but apparently, there was a change in the legal entity, so they would have to change that. So basically, the owner just signs off on the petition, they have all the information they need, they know that it's due tomorrow. Once we get this vote, they would then file that, and then the gears start rolling as far as the annexation.
Any questions about that? You want to talk through funding agreement at all?
I would, if anybody has any questions, Mr. Bolt has been preparing these and has, has worked through the terms, and this, they've negotiated back and forth, and I think we're to a point now where we're close, but there still may be a few terms here and there that still need to be ironed out between now and, say, Monday before we actually present. The funding agreement that we present for the first reading may look different than the one that we presented today, but only a few tweaks here and there. But I would defer to Mr. Bolt as far as if anybody has any questions about the funding agreement and.
You have any highlights or comments, Preston, you'd like to?
No, I think, I think Rush's summary in the PowerPoint, you know, covered the important parts, and, and, and blind's point that we do have a few things to iron out, and some language questions to resolve, but we'll get those done, we hope, in the next day or so.
I think pros or cons about if we work toward a one single GO bond for the, for the city, you have any thoughts on that?
Pretty thorough from what the parts I've acted here, but, you know, there's, there are certainly some upfront savings from a GO, and the, and the big question in my mind, which is not a legal question, it's a, it's a pretty question, is what's the impact on the city's ability to go to market if it needed to for other things? And Rush has already addressed that, and he discussed that with the rating folks. So I don't say it.
Questions, comments? You want to highlight anything, Renee?
Um, in terms of path forward, if we pass this resolution, which does not guarantee that we're going to come to terms on any one of the three, but if we pass this resolution, then our action steps would be to go ahead and start drafting the other version as well, so that we'd be ready for a first reading of whichever version we can do, and wait to hear from Mr. Rice on what he's hearing about our credit rating, and how that might impact it if we go.
Think so. Any other discussion y'all want to hit on this before we, we want to vote on the, on, on the letter, Paul, Rush, I mean, anybody got anything?
No, it's the first time I'm seeing this. I can't really ask questions.
Well, it may change too. It may change. I mean, I would think. And probably the first reading would be the best place to get to ask some questions, when you know which version you're working off. I mean, I think, but it kind of gives you a kind of a roadmap on the harder version, if we go to.
Greg, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, this would, your question is, this funding agreement would, whichever one we end up going with, would replace the 2018 agreement?
In every way. Did you correct?
Yes. The other one would go away, and this one would replace it.
This is a.
What we were talking about here, I asked whether the 2018 agreement just completely goes away once we start this one, because there's a lot of things in the other one.
Yes, it does.
It's totally gone, right?
That is beginning.
We're placing it full. So Brenda, I need to close the, the work session and open a special call, or just do it all, does it?
I think you could go straight into, but I think it may, it may be better just to closing than special, just to.
All right.
Make a motion to close the work session?
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any new discussion? We need to vote on it to close? Then we just adjourn it. So now I'll open the special session of Master City Council. You need a roll call for that? Ma'am? I don't think we need to vote on closing the, I haven't got a vote on closing. We'll just, we'll just move to adjourn it.
Right.
Do you want to call roll call on the special call session? Okay.
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
We have a court, so we'll, we'll move forward. We'll have one motion tonight that we have on one resolution. So if we could get a motion on, on that. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion?
I have a question for our city attorney. This particular draft of the letter agreement, do you have it signed already by Mr. Breland? What version do you have?
No, they have not signed it yet. We'd have to get their signature, but it has not been executed in advance of the meeting tonight, no.
Okay, so Mr. Bolt has asked me a question with respect to paragraph one of the letter agreement, since we're contemplating an option of either going with two bonds or one. His question is, currently, the letter agreement in paragraph one says the city would enter into a funding agreement between the city and the district to support the payment of principal of an interest on revenue bonds to be issued by the district, and Mr. Bolt is asking, or to pay directly the principal and interest on the existing district bond. So if we could add that and amend paragraph one to give us two options?
Absolutely.
For the funding agreement?
That would give the council the options of being able to vote tonight and be able to go in either direction, yes.
And then issue, issue that letter agreement with that amendment, and then he can sign it, and we can sign it, if it passes.
Yes.
So do you move to amend the motion, or?
Yes, so I move to amend the current motion to approve the letter agreement in paragraph one by adding the words "or to pay directly the principal and interest on the existing district bond" before the parentheses, the funding agreement.
Second.
Yes.
Motion to second.
We already have a motion on the floor to vote, and I have Seifert and Robleski. Do we want to table that one, or, because we just moved into another?
Well, she didn't.
Because we're amending.
So we have to.
We didn't vote the first time.
But we have us.
We're waiting to, we're gonna vote on the amendments, we have to, they've just yet a, a motion and a second on an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
Then there'd be, I guess, discussion. If no discussion, then we vote on the amendment, and I think we vote on the, the overall agreement.
Right, okay. Their motion's still out there, but we're gonna take my amendment first.
Right.
So on that, we have Mara?
Mm-hmm.
Motion, second. You made the motion.
On the amendment, I made the motion, and did John say?
Connie seconded.
Connie seconded, okay.
John and I are on the resolution.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So this, this vote is for the amendment. We'll vote on that first. So can I get the vote, please?
You can.
Start with Renee and Connie.
Got you.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the amendment passes. Now, the motion is for to accept this.
As amended.
As amended.
Amended.
Amended, yeah.
Can we eat the vote, please? Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Very good, and motion passes. So that's really all I had on the, on the ticket tonight. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Thanks to Rush for being up here, Preston to be on the phone, Greg and Renee for a ton of. Thanks to Rush for being up here, Preston to be on the phone, Greg and Renee for a ton of time that you guys have invested in getting us to this point. I think we still have a lot of work to do, but thank you guys for your time and especially, and Johnny, thank you for coming also for getting up here and being here to support us. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Rush. Steve, I mean, I think everybody's worked on it. Mayor's office is missing.
Well, we've all worked on it. You guys have carried the water for a long, for a long time now, so thank you.
Good effort. That's it, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move. Be it.
Hi, Brian.
Thanks, y'all.
Hey, thank you, Preston. I know we're going on the phone, so. I appreciate you.